Let's call our briefing session to order for the Spokane City Council for November 13th. And we're going to start with roll call.
Council President Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Ulrich.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. So, we have an extra-long agenda. We've combined last week's with this week's. And I'm going to go through the November 13th first because we have a few things to substitute. If you go to page 10, there's a request, I need a motion to substitute Resolution 0094 with the updated revised version received on November 9th. Can I get a motion?
I'm not there yet.
Trying to get there.
So moved. It's the library levy.
Oh, it is. Okay. So, let's hold off on that until we have a conversation.
I made a motion, I think. Do I need to rescind that motion?
This is a motion to substitute?
So.
Yes.
Let's leave that for just now. Let's go through the rest of it.
I withdraw my motion.
Oh, thank you. On page 12, the City Council Letter to Washington State Legislature Regarding Plastics.
Motion to add?
Need to suspend the rules to add, so a motion to suspend.
Motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of adding to the agenda.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I don't remember this.
We got a last-minute email about it today.
Oh, I guess I've been in meetings all day, so I haven't seen it. What's the general idea of it?
Well, the gist of it is that the Spokane Zero Waste is, the kids, Ferris and so forth, Ferris High School and LC are coming forward with a letter asking us to support their letter of asking for zero waste.
Okay.
And plastics.
But it's a specific House bill, isn't it, that we're supporting?
Kelly, are you here? Want to come up?
Thank you. You guys have had this on our legislative agenda in the past. It's currently on Tier 2. This is called EPR Legislation Extended Producer Responsibility to Reduce Plastics in the Waste Stream. A group of students from LC organized by Spokane Zero Waste put together a packet of letters I sent to you last week. It was a last-minute ask last week, or actually the week before, but we had to get it on the agenda for this week. Asking you simply to just sign onto a letter of support, much like I asked you earlier in the spring and summer to sign the letter about the co-op electric vehicle sharing, the pilot program. This would just be asking you to sign the letter to support these students to go to the state legislature and ask them to make this a priority.
So, are we supporting this specific legislation or supporting their trip to Olympia?
Supporting this specific legislation. And the letter is drafted and it should be in your packet.
Okay. I mean, I have no problem voting on this. I just don't know what it is at this point. Do we have to do it this week? Can we do it next week?
The packet's being sent on the 15th to Olympia.
On Wednesday.
Correct.
Now, remember, it's been in the works for two weeks. So, it's been on our radar supposedly.
Right.
If you've read the email and so forth.
Well, yeah, and I've read the emails and I remember the conversations as the state ledge ask. And I remember I had some questions on that that we hadn't answered, and so I didn't think that things were moving forward just yet, but.
And this did, sorry, did this go to the ledge committee?
It is. We have been discussing it in the ledge committee. Yes.
Yeah.
I was just saying, we talked about it last year on the legislative committee also. And did we end up adopting this?
No, it did not pass last week.
Was it a Tier 2?
It had, I can't remember if it was Tier 2 or Tier 1, but it had a couple of pieces to it and one piece passed, but this one did not. Also known as the RAP Act.
Right.
Go ahead.
I will say this came up also in September with the Association of Washington Cities around this whole legislative agenda item here. And we are in support. There is a significant number of cities across the state who have signed on to this. So, it's not like we're out in left field somewhere.
Correct. Other big cities in Washington State have also signed on, and I included a list of other legislators who've also signed on to this in one of the original emails I sent to you. I would also add that this is an opportunity for you to support young people and local students who are getting involved in their community and government in taking a stand on an issue and supporting them.
Yeah, and I generally think that's a great idea. In the end, you know, I'm voting on it, and so that's why I want to know what's happening. So, I mean, if we're doing it tonight, I guess that's, it is what it is, but.
So, right now, it's just to suspend the rules.
Sure.
So, can we vote on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, we have to add items. Can I have a motion for that?
A motion to add S1 to the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion other than what we've already had?
I would just, again, I know that it's happening on Wednesday, so we don't really have time to defer it, or not defer, but add it to next week's agenda, but that would have been the ask if we had time.
All those in favor, anybody else? All those in favor of adding it?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Are you a no as well?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's two noes, Terry. Great. Now, let's go back to the two resolutions. And I'm going to ask Garrett Jones to my right, we've talked about this, Garrett, and we're going to ask that we defer this for a week so that parks can make some changes and bring it back. Did you get a chance to talk with the library folks?
Yeah, and Andrew's here as well. So, concerns were brought forward as far as the timing of these resolutions and then being on the ballot for February of 2024. I think from a standpoint from the city organization as a whole, it is important, I think, on any of these measures to be at a unified stance and approach. And I would hate to have a date or timing overshadow the overall vision and program. And so, in talking with Council President, if that's what it takes to look at what those opportunities are in 2024, from a general sense, if there is concern about February, then that is still an opportunity. There was also conversation about having the new leadership within council to have a voice and comments on the direction of the city as a whole as well and where we're investing our dollars. And again, I don't think we've heard any concerns about what libraries is trying to do in the program and what parks is trying to do. What we are hearing concern is around the timing. And I just don't want that to then overshadow the great work that the staff has done from the parks and libraries side. If we still think the vision and the investment is important, but if we don't get that consensus around timing, then having a little extra time to take a look at that and what that looks like, I think is valid.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I would actually make a motion to defer Resolution 20230094 and 20230095 to December 4th.
Okay. Second?
I'll second that.
Right now, conversation, go ahead.
Yeah, a question. So, you're going to rework this in some way. Can you give us some 50,000-foot view of what's going to change? Because right now, I'm very grateful that Northeast is going to get a predominant share. We have a lot of investments going in in really important places, and I just want to make sure that this delay is not going to negate what we've already discussed.
Yeah, and I think in this delay, it's very important, I think, to have a stance or a commitment from this council just to support of the program and it being a priority in 2024. We don't want to lose that vision. I think in some of the conversations we had is just giving a little bit more flexibility in what that resolution looks like and saying, we want a ballot measure to happen in 2024. We just don't know that timing, is it TBD, until we have a greater conversation as a city as a whole, as far as whether it's public safety, when do we, when does timing work with that? Do we want to couple it with other investments? And another piece of this is too, I mean, the park board was very committed as long as, same with the library board in that February, and there was a lot of advantages, and we went through some of those pros and cons here at briefing. And I think that's important work that they have done as well, but I just don't, again, I don't want to take and compromise that program if there is concerns about that timing and having that conversation as a greater whole of what we need as a city.
So, if I could just follow up on one thing, or maybe two pieces. One is, if we delay past February, I don't think there's any interest by schools to delay. So, they will go, they will potentially pass, and that will, I think, perhaps bias the public against a future ask from parks and libraries if we're in a future date. And so, I feel like we either got to go concurrently with them, or we really run the risk of then being sort of like, okay, the public safety ask failed, then schools, maybe it passes, maybe it fails, and then we're number three, right? In this, and I think definitely we will be in the worst position of the three if we do that.
Could Matt Boston, come on up.
And then the other piece too is, if we decide to go on a special, not February, but say May, I would definitely not want us to be the only ones so that we're footing the $300,000 bill.
And again, I think from the school standpoint, we saw a lot of value in that partnership when they were looking at a flat levy and a bond ask and those strategic projects that we're looking at. Those strategic projects would still be there as an opportunity if the city then came forward with a ballot measure and that the school bond and levy was successful and we came in as a city as far as the fields and the operational efficiencies between libraries, parks, and the school district. But again, that was a part of the consideration with the park board is, boy, if we're the last ones to the dog dish, we might not have any food.
That's right.
Left, right?
100%.
And so, that was a piece that, again, the park board was very prominent in saying, we think February was that right time.
You've had conversations with all of us about this.
Not all of you, but most of you, yes. So, I don't think there's any real question of where the city as an organization, as Mr. Jones is saying, stands financially. We're struggling financially. We know that the library ask as well as the parks ask is a great either maintenance of service or add-to in terms of, in the sense of parks. We have to think about it holistically as an organization, as Mr. Jones is saying, because just like you're saying, Councilmember Cathcart, once you ask, any ask after that is going to be hit with pretty heavy scrutiny. And we don't, I don't think we have the tools or the plan necessary to develop an ask for February as it relates to all of the needs that are needed within the city from an organization standpoint. So, is it delaying to really develop that plan of what do we need organizationally? Or is it saying, let's put our best foot forward to add-to parks and then maybe hit a really difficult choice in August and Feb, or August, November, when we have to ask for something else? So, I think that that was the idea there.
So, are you suggesting we would combine, maybe not literally combine, but put on the same ballot, parks and some sort of a levy lid lift to fund operations for the city?
Well, I'm not going to pretend to know what's best to kind of partner together in terms of what the asks are. I know we've done streets and parks in the past. There was a discussion of doing parks and public safety about six months ago that there was pretty significant traction to. I think really having a consultant vet all of the needs of the city, as we all know that we have significant needs within the general fund, and saying, okay, this is what our goals are, and this is the revenue that we need to achieve those goals, and whether it be manipulating those goals to best suit a positive result from the voters, I think, is going to be crucial.
Well, I guess this is the first I've heard of a consultant coming in to do this work, but in my mind, the new administration is going to bring in, you know, some high-powered person who's going to be shepherding and making these decisions. And so, do you think we need a consultant on top of that?
I don't pretend to know, again, what the new administration is going to do and who's going to be vetting this process. I don't think it takes a high-powered individual or a consultant with a significant amount of source matter expertise to realize the hole that we're in facing 2024 as well as past that. We know that the structural gap was $22, $23 million as it stood in 2024. We know that's going to spread even further in 2025, and that's just our core operations. So, if we're talking about a park add-to in service and we're forgetting the core operations that has a significant structural gap, I think we're doing a disservice to the constituents within the city because we're not telling the full story of what we need as an organization to best serve our citizens.
Last thing I'll just add, I agree with you, but I think the disservice is if we do not come out of this with a budget that is truly sustainable. And that's not the direction we're headed in right now. And so, that disservice is already being done. And so, but to me, to then say, nope, we're not going to do parks in February, which I think is a guarantee that it will fail if we don't do it February, just my opinion, but I think it will fail if that's the case. And so, I think effectively then what we're saying is that our inability to balance the budget properly is now affecting services and amenities for the public in ways that it shouldn't. And so, I think we have to think about that.
Yeah, and I mean, I agree with you for the most part, but I also know that with the lack of ability to increase our revenues at least concurrently with our expenditure increases, just from a personnel standpoint, makes it difficult to balance the budget at any point in time. That structural gap will hit no matter what. And so, even if you are balancing the budget and making those revenues hit those expenses, you can be certain that the structural gap will reappear in next year. You have to have some sort of mechanism that is going to align your revenue curve with your expenditure curve. And when we have collective bargaining agreements, of which we've said is 85% of our overall costs within the general fund that are raising at anywhere between 5.5% to 10.5% of overall cost of compensation, yet our revenues are moving at about 3% to 4% on a good day, there's no question that that structural gap is going to continue popping its head out and that we are going to have to look for that revenue. And the levy lid lift is the most apparent that's out there.
Anyone else?
Yeah, so I think that there's clearly some discussion that needs to be had, so that's why I proposed to December 4th. I think that gives us some time to have more conversations.
Did we get a second on that?
I second.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Right, so defer till December 4th?
Was everybody an aye?
Yes. I saw lips move saying aye. Good. All right, let's go on. Anything else I missed, Garrett? Let's go on to the 20th.
I had a motion on ordinance C36454 relating to solar permits.
Hold on. What page are you on?
11.
Okay. And your motion is?
I want to make a motion to defer that to December 4th. I think that was the Monday.
Which word now?
The solar permits.
Solar permit fees.
Oh.
Right. We have a second?
A second. Are the rules still suspended? Rules are still suspended?
Well. We don't need it.
Second.
All right, discussion.
Would that give our SAS committee time by December 4th to look at it?
So.
Maybe, we don't know.
I'll look to Kelly for that.
Yeah. So, what does that do to the SAS committee if this is deferred to December 4th? I know we're still getting emails.
Correct. What it would do, it wouldn't allow them to have an official process. We would have had to bring it up at our last meeting, which was last week, and then they wouldn't meet until Tuesday, the 5th. However, what it could do is give you some time to actually get the number of what the metric and the measurement is for what's written in the SMC right now. And so, we're deliberating as to what this, you know, majority of energy source in Washington State actually is and what the intent was in 2018 when we wrote, when it was written. So, it would allow us to gather that information from them. You will hear from some of them tonight. You'll continue to get some email correspondence.
We wouldn't end up hearing from them tonight if we deferred it. They would have to sign up for open forum, which they would want to know.
I see what you're saying.
Because then it wouldn't be on tonight's agenda.
Correct. So, they are counting on being able to testify to it tonight, and this will be the second time it's been deferred. I can, of course, make sure they know that, but it will still end up kicking it down the road in terms of actually giving testimony, so.
Yeah. And on this, there's a number of issues with the ordinance that was written. The language is vague. Nobody seems to understand what it means. Nobody can make a definitive statement on something. Chris, I don't know if you want to weigh in on this because I know you've gone down the rabbit hole a little bit.
Well, could you in particular comment on the email we just received from Legal regarding this?
I just saw it. I haven't had a chance to read it.
Can you talk into here?
I just saw it. I haven't had a chance to read it, digest it.
Oh, if Legal's here, it seems pretty definitive and clear in my mind, so maybe there's something Legal could share.
Well, we could, so you all can have a chance to learn what Legal has to say because if you defer it till the 4th, you'll be able to figure it out. Legal's welcome to come up here. Lyndon, are you back there? Did you want to come?
I don't, I don't. Yeah, the email just came in from James.
Okay. So, Lyndon, you may not have seen it. All right, he goes and backs him.
I did not get an email either.
Can I show some background?
Yeah.
Please go, yes.
Just quickly, I think Mr. Richmond's more up to date than anybody else in Legal, and I don't see him down here. I'll let the email speak for itself, but he was just putting together, I think, a quick overview of permit fees and how those can be backfilled or not backfilled.
Okay, so Libby's lining up too.
I just want to point out that the email did not come to all council members.
Didn't it?
No.
Yeah, I think James Richmond just sent an email just a few minutes ago. There are some legal concerns.
I did not get an email.
So, deferring it would be, give us time to support, sort that out.
Okay.
Yeah, it was very.
Yes, I got, I got James Richmond's.
It's not sent to all council members.
We can make sure that gets forwarded to everybody. Once I get back upstairs, we'll make sure that happens.
Well, I guess my question is, based on what I'm reading, and I know we can't really discuss it openly here, but it sounds like this ordinance is almost not even necessary, that essentially we're already in violation, so.
Essentially.
Okay.
Anything else? We have a deferral till the 4th.
I guess if we're going to defer, my ask would be that the SAS does help us clarify some things on what that, on what it means. Hopefully, we can get the authors of the ordinance to weigh in and, you know, share with us some of their intent as well, because it seemed as if when we reached out to them, we got very vague responses back. And so, the intent of the law would be very helpful. I would prefer that we don't defer, but if we're going to defer, let's get some clarity on some things. I think there are some legal issues here. There's some definitional issues. There's some equity concerns here when you're talking, you know, socioeconomic issues. And so, I think that there's a number of things that we could get some clarity on that could help us make some decisions if we are going to defer.
Okay, anybody else? All right. All those in favor of deferring till December 4th?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. Aye.
Okay. Thank you, and?
Council President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to substitute for the ordinance C36461, the general facilities charges, which was the, there was a few documents that I sent out or that Libby or Chris sent out. There's quite a few cooks in this kitchen. And so, make the motion to substitute the Bingle version of those, yes, one of, literally Libby said Bingle version, so, but yeah, that version for both the fee structure and the public rule.
Okay. Anybody want to second that?
Does the public rule have to be added, or have we already added that?
Chris?
What was your question again?
The public rule, does it have to be added or is it just substituted?
I think it's on the agenda already as a resolution, but it has to be substituted because there were some minor fixes in it.
So, can I ask a question?
Yes, but could you speak into the microphone?
We don't have a second yet.
Oh, yes, we don't have a second.
I will second if nobody else.
So, the one we're looking at, the sponsors were Council President Kinnear and Bingle.
Yes.
Correct. And so, the one that you're offering is just you?
Yes.
Are you on this?
No. He broke away from me. He broke up with me.
I would say you broke from me, but.
We broke up.
Okay. It wasn't you, it was him. Still going to be friends.
Yeah, pretty much. Yeah, we're still friends.
Society let us down.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
I had a question about, so to get clarity on the differences between them, it seems like the biggest issues, the two that I'm seeing is the Bingle version.
Yes.
Does not include interests.
Correct.
And then Council President's version does. And then the Councilmember Bingle version has 100% waiver.
Offset.
Offset for low-income projects.
Permanently affordable housing. Yes.
Language matters.
It does, yeah.
And then Council President's is a 50%.
Correct.
And mine does not include an offset for MFTE projects that is currently in there. So, those are the big distinctions.
I was wondering if there's a way to merge and get back together with a.
Reconciliation, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, with a version of keeping the interest but doing the 100% offset.
Or we talked about the interest and just saying, interest would be picked back up at a certain time period, right? So, it'd be no interest for a certain.
Or having the interest discussion again in, you know, because written into the ordinance, we will review this no more frequent than three years, but no later than five years. And so, in three to five years, we're going to have this discussion again, and then allowing the interest discussion to take place when we, when we rediscuss in three to five years.
So, it's possible we could defer this for a week so that he and I could get back together.
You guys might be able to work it out.
Well, I mean, I thought we talked about this a lot. Can we still get there?
Maybe.
Can you meet me?
I can tonight.
Yes, one of, literally Libby said Bingle version, so, but yeah, that version for both the fee structure and the public rule.
Okay.
So...
Anybody want to second that?
Does the public rule have to be added, or have we already added that?
Chris?
Well, the, what was your question again?
The public rule, does it have to be added, or is it just substituted?
I think it's on the agenda already as a resolution, but it has to be substituted because there were some minor fixes in it.
So, can I ask a question?
Yes, but could you speak into the microphone?
We don't, we don't have a second yet.
Oh, yes, we don't have a second.
I will, I will second if nobody else...
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
So the one we're looking at, the sponsors were Council President Canare and Bingle.
Yes.
Correct. And so the one that you're offering is just you?
Yes.
Are you on this?
No. He broke, he broke away from me.
Okay.
He broke up with me.
I would say you broke from me, but...
Okay. We broke up.
Okay. It's not, it wasn't you, it was him. Still going to be friends?
Yeah, pretty much. Yeah, we're still friends.
Society let us down.
Okay.
Any other, any other comments, questions?
I had a question about, so to get clarity on the differences between them, it seems like the biggest issues, the two that I'm seeing is the Bingle version...
Yes.
Does not include interest.
Correct.
And Council President's version does. And then the Councilmember Bingle version has 100% waiver...
Offset.
Offset for low-income projects.
Permanently affordable housing.
Okay.
Yes.
Language matters.
It does, yep.
And then Council President's is a 50%.
Correct.
And mine does not include an offset for MFTE projects that is currently in there. So those are the, the big distinctions.
I, I was wondering if there's a way to merge and get back together with a...
Reconciliation, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Reconciliation.
With a version of keeping the interest, but doing the 100% offset.
Or we talked about the interest and just saying interest would be picked back up at a certain time period, right? So it'd be no interest for a certain...
Or, or having the interest discussion again in, you know, because written into the ordinance, we will review this no more frequent than three years, but no later than five years. And so in three to five years, we're going to have this discussion again, and then allowing the interest discussion to take place when we, when we rediscuss in three to five years.
So it's possible we could defer this for a week so that he and I could get back together...
You guys might be able to work it out?
Well, I mean, I thought we talked about this a lot. Can, can we still get there?
Maybe.
Can you meet me?
I can tonight.
Okay, all right.
Tonight's first reading, correct? So we...
Oh, right.
We have a week effectively, if there's some additional conversations.
Yeah.
So you don't have to substitute tonight?
Oh, yeah, no substit, you don't.
I would like to substitute tonight.
But if we're going to get together, we have to have a week to discuss it.
Uh, what's the, well, there has, there's always the clarity of the public about which version are they talking about?
Right.
What's the most current version that council's considering?
Right.
So I think that's the question of what's the most current version.
Yes.
And Councilmember Bingle wants it to be his version.
The biggest concern I have is not charging interest because the public, the rate payer will pick up that fee that, that we're not charging. It's a small amount, really, when you think about, it's not the amount for the total structure, whatever it is. It's the amount that it was when it was built. So that's, that's our only sticking point, really.
Is the interest.
Yes.
I think you could work that through.
I suppose we could.
Yeah.
Do we need a counselor?
I think we could get a part-time counselor to come in and sit down and...
I see seven counselors up here.
Okay.
I was a counselor in a former life, happy to have volunteers trivia.
So I guess, yeah, I, I hear where we're at on this. You know, we spent, you know, a ton of time working on this policy, getting it to where it is now. We have community groups that are in support of the, you know, of the new proposed version. I think we have, you know, community builder groups that are in support. I think the version that we proposed is a very good middle ground version for now that is supported by for-profit and nonprofits alike. And so I, I would prefer that we just substitute, move forward, you know, but, I mean, if, if we can find some middle ground, I mean, I would also love to find middle ground, but...
We're just asking for a week.
Sure.
If you withdraw your motion, we can just, go ahead, counselor.
I was going to say, with the discussion right now, I wouldn't be in support of either one till we had a week's deferral for more clarity, because it seems like we're all over the place, right? At least, that's what I hear. And I have issues with the resolution, so a week deferral would be...
Okay.
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion.
Right, thank you.
And I look forward to meeting with every council member, clear some time, and we'll...
So we will be to make a motion to defer?
Yeah.
No, we don't, because we, it's only first reading tonight.
Because we're part of the custody battle?
That's right.
So you guys need to figure that out.
You can have the children.
I mean, that raises the question if we'll be ready to vote in a week, or if it needs two weeks to come to a vote. I don't know.
We can do it. We can do it. There'll be time. All right, we have somebody online, I think it's Jeff Hanson, who is applying for Jacoby Ethics Commission. Jeff, welcome.
Thank you so much.
Sorry you had to wait. Do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Oh, sure. North Idaho native. Left, I was about 21-years-old, did serve in the United States Navy for five years. Stuck around California for a little while to attend college, graduated, moved back home, and about 12-years ago moved state line and have been in Spokane since. Very, very interested in serving a larger role in the civic community. As far as being serving on the Ethics Commission, that one has really been on my radar for a long time. I'm really looking forward to talking more about that opportunity.
So some of our council members have questions, and I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Strat, and she's got a question for you.
So just a clarification, because I don't think I heard you. So do you live in Washington State or Idaho?
Yes, ma'am, I live in Washington State.
Okay.
Born in North Idaho, moved here about 12-years ago.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And when you say here, you mean the city of Spokane?
Yes, ma'am, I apologize for not being clear on that. Yes, here in Spokane.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead.
I just was wondering more about kind of your lens and framework for how you would approach, approach the Ethics Commission and the purpose you think of the commission, and how would you be on that commission?
And really, this serving on the Ethics Commission has been on my radar because I have a high level of interest in learning about it. I, I think it's a big learning opportunity, for sure, to say the least. My experience in the military, I think, really served me well exploring the, the right path to ethic, ethical dilemmas, honor, courage, and commitment. For those that are familiar with serving in the military, I think plays a great deal in not only my time in the military, but my time afterwards. My career has been in banking for the past 15-years or so, and as you can all imagine, integrity with processes and procedures related to banking is vital. And I think that experience will lend me quite, served me quite well to perform well with the Ethics Commission. I think my, my curiosity, my high level of interest, and my experience, all of that will serve me well, I think, onboard the Ethics Commission.
And I just want to follow up, thank you for that, is what, what do you think the role of the Ethics Commission is, and what is your understanding of the Ethics Commission so far?
Absolutely. So my understanding is that the Ethics Commission will review complaints that have been filed to determine if there has been a rule broken ethically or drawn up against the rules that are written for that, that process. And I worded that really awkwardly toward the end there, so I hope that made sense. But really, it's determining if rules were broken and determining next steps.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Hi, Jeff, Councilmember Wilkinson, good to see your application come forward. You say the Ethics Committee has been on your radar for a while. What was the impetus that caught your attention to pursue this appointment?
I think for me, it's more a, a personal nature. I love exploring those ethical situations, and I think it, I gravitate towards those, it's just kind of how my brain works, I'm kind of looking at the, the black and white. Here are the rules, here are the procedures that they are drawn up, and then based on the facts of a situation, how do they land against these rules? And that really just speaks to me and my, my role. I work with data quality, so we, we take data and measure it against rules that we, that are established around data. So the, the Ethics Commission process really kind of speaks to that, that sort of natural tendency of mine in reviewing situation.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I have one more question for Jeff, and I have actually a question for Garrett about process here. My question for you, Jeff, is just kind of, how do you approach things with, you know, an unbiased perspective? How do you maintain that unbiased going into a situation?
I think it's really, really important to know the different ways that bias can impact your actions. And there are, to be honest, there are a lot of ways in which that can happen. Just by you asking me two questions could bias my opinion about, about you or us. So it's about being mindful, I think, to the many different ways that bias can take place, and separating that from the facts of the case, or, or the complaint, if you will. I think that I have a, a solid grasp of doing that. I'm a bit of an over thinker, so I'm definitely going to be a bit of an over thinker and over worrier of, of being biased in any way.
All right, thank you.
And there was, I apologize, there was a second part to that question. Did I fully...
No, you did answer that. My second question was not actually for you. So thank you very much.
Oh, sorry.
My second question I didn't ask yet either. It was for Garrett, and I noticed that this application came through back in April. And so I was just wondering if you knew more background as to the timing of why his application's coming forward now?
I don't. From an operational standpoint, so these, these applications come straight to the mayor, and then the mayor evaluates those applications and then moves forward when she sees fit. So I don't have that answer from the operational standpoint.
Any other questions for Jeff? Good. Jeff, thanks so much, putting yourself out there. Appreciate your time. Jacoby, when does the vote come on this?
Not scheduled yet.
Vote's not scheduled yet, but Jacoby will let you know when it is. Thanks very much.
Thank you, councilmembers. I appreciate your time. Take care.
Okay, one last thing to do, and that is for the, oh, there are two, actually. The November 20th agenda, the administration is asking us to defer the appointments of Office of Police Ombudsman Commission. There was one appointment, and the mayor's asking for a deferral on this?
I'm moved to defer this indefinitely.
Second.
Go ahead.
Point of order, if we indefinitely defer, does that mean we never filled the position?
Well, we have to fill it eventually.
On this appointment nominee, I believe.
And who's the nominee?
She was here last week.
Shelley, she was here last time.
Oh, oh, okay, gotcha.
Yes, go ahead.
I, I guess, why, why is the administration asking for a deferral?
There's not the support to...
Advance.
Oh.
Yeah. Right now.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor of, oh, wait, I got to get a second for that.
You had a second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, okay, thank you. And I think, is there anything else, Garrett, on the 20th? Oh, yes, there's a request to suspend the rules to add page 10, the Resolution 0097. We need to suspend the rules and add the following items. It was circulated by Libby. Libby, I don't know when you circulated it, could you tell me?
Are you talking to GFC power?
It's 0097. It's the Spokane Public Rule for Wastewater and Water General Facilities Charges and Incentives.
Right, so the public rule, we circulated this morning, later this morning.
Okay.
Two proposals. So there was one staff recommendation, which was an update of the prior public rule that was filed.
Okay.
And really, that was cleaning up the format, you know, identifying the departments correctly. There were no substantive changes on that.
Okay.
And then I sent around this morning a copy of Councilmember Bingle's proposal. But regardless of what happens, we need to substitute for what's in the packet.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
All right, any questions for? Go ahead.
So this is the resolution, so I'm looking at that. So I have some concerns around any project meeting, the standards imposed by 1590, that there is no equity lens, and that is part of the 1590 funding packet. There has been no review, no input on that. My other concern is around that first come, first served basis for small BIPOC organizations that are getting started. I see there could be some unintended consequences in how we support them. And was there an equity lens even used in drafting this public rule? And what will be used in enforcing this public rule? How will we go forward? What will be the engagement, or who will be looking at that? So I think it should go to the Housing Action Subcommittee for review. I don't think it's been there yet. Respect to the racial equity framework, or, or in addition, deferring the public rule until new council's members are seated. So those are my concerns and some suggestions on this particular resolution.
And you want that done before the resolution is, before council?
That would be my wish, yes. But I'm open to other input, but I think it's critical that we really adhere to the 1590 funding as it was set up, and we did not do that.
Yeah, and I think as to the timing, I think the reason this is here now is because council asked for it to go at the same time as the ordinance. So how council addresses that is within your purview.
So I'm asking for, then I'll ask for the deferral till December the 4th, then, with everything else. I'll give us some time, but go ahead, Councilmember.
Well, my, my question's for you. I guess I would just wonder if, maybe you could help me understand, what would be, if, had this been conducted under an equity lens, what would be different in it?
Well, you know, first of all, to acknowledge that it did go through the process. So we set up processes that we don't even follow ourself. We have made a significant statement about how equity affects everything that we do, especially around this money and around housing issues, and I think that should be adhered to. So will it be different? I don't know, but we haven't engaged the people who could contribute to how these general facility rules are written.
And then are there anything, other than the 1590 references, or anything in there that specifically is a concern?
Specifically to the 1590 funding.
Okay.
You can remove the 1590 funding, but I think we would like to at least have the review of the committee to look at this.
So I'd asked for a suspension of the rules. Did I get a response from that? I don't think I did.
I thought we could just defer it until the December the 4th, as with the other GFC.
All right, so do you want to make that motion, please?
I, I request a deferral till December the 4th.
Point of order, I don't know that we need a deferral if it's not on the agenda, right?
Well, it's on...
The advanced.
The advanced.
This is the advanced for the 20th.
I thought we were...
So yes, we do. We need a second, and then we can have discussion.
I'll just second.
All right. Now discussion.
So...
Go ahead.
Where are we exactly on the agenda?
We are on page 10, 00230097.
Very top.
This is the public rule.
Right, yes, it is.
It goes with the GFCs.
And this is the, the current version in the packet?
Yes.
All right. Not the Bingle version. We'd have to substitute the Bingle version. There's a lot of moving pieces.
Yes, I know, that's, and it gets very confusing. Jacoby, did you have to say something, want to say something?
I just wanted to note that it's requiring a rule suspension, because this resolution itself has not been to committee. So that will not change if you all defer it another week. So I would suggest adding it to the agenda and deferring, you know, in one motion. But to get it on to tonight's agenda, a version, and that's up to you all, because there was one from Libby circulated from, that's more in alignment with Council President, and then there is another one that's a Bingle version. So I think adding and deferring in one motion, just so it's added via suspension of the rules to the agenda, and then deferred to another date would be appropriate. to the agenda, and then deferred to another date, would be appropriate.
Go ahead.
Can I ask a question of Nicolette around the Housing Action Subcommittee? Do you have an idea when this, the opportunity would, to be able to go before them?
So technically, the Housing Action Subcommittee would have a meeting on Thursday. It's been a little bit difficult to, actually, Councilwoman Cathcart and I spoke about this this morning. It's been a little bit difficult to hold those meetings because they're ready to pass their bylaws when conversations were had about the future of 1590 and maybe taking it out from the purview of the Housing Action Subcommittee. And a good conscience, I couldn't have them pass bylaws that then the next month might be totally irrelevant. And with respect to the conversation we could have on Thursday, there are a lot of unknowns, and so we had a discussion about whether or not it would be, you know, in our best interest to still host that meeting without knowing a lot of these details about what the future of 1590 looks like, the future of the Housing Action Subcommittee, which was created, you know, predominantly to actually review the projects with respect to 1590. If you guys did want to have that conversation, I would be more than happy to have somebody from the administration to present on their perspective of 1590, to still allow that discussion to occur. Councilwoman Cathcart, did you want to say anything, or?
No, I mean, based on what we were discussing earlier, without any concrete proposals or anything for them to review, it just felt like it wouldn't really be a productive meeting time. And so that was where we left off that conversation, so.
And it is difficult. I mean, one thing that they have discussed were GFCs, and the resounding comment from that group were that they were not in favor of 1590 being used to backfill GFCs. I don't know that they had the entire perspective of, you know, the state law requiring backfilling and, you know, the nuances to that, the other funding sources that are available. So, I mean, I'm more than happy to still hold that meeting, if you think that it should be held in that way, but. And actually, even if you think that we should cancel it, I would like to know that by the end of today, so that I can go ahead and issue that cancellation and send a.
Okay.
Just personally, I think it would be helpful to have their perspective as to where we are right now. Because really, we don't have true feedback from them on this particular issues. And it is, it could be a significant issue to 1590 funding. So I think we should hear, at least hear from them. None of us have the certainty of what's going on.
And actually, if I could speak to the question you asked, Councilwoman Cathcart, or Councilwoman Cathcart asked you earlier about that equity piece and what would be different. So for example, when we met with Muherison Action and they have this project that they want to do, you know, near the Northeast Community Center, they're gonna have to go through about a year-long plan amendment. And this concept of first-come, first-served might, you know, exclude organizations like that that won't be ready until the end of the fiscal year, possibly. And also not wanting to pass up these projects that these buy-in for communities are putting together that are desperately needed in our community and might not make it to the top of the list before that funding source is depleted, and for which there are projects where these are some of the only dollars that are available to them for that kind of, you know, project, and are specifically catered directly for what the state intended when they passed 1590.
And that makes sense. My only tiny rebuttal to that would be the project specifically that Muherison Action is doing, which I'm really excited about, is a very specialty niche project focused on domestic violence victims. And so in my mind, that would be in a whole different category of how we'd be allocating dollars, so.
Yeah, and I would encourage that, too, because 1590 in and of itself is a very, like, specialized, you know, pot of funding with the 60% below AMI and that specialized population. And so to make sure that we're making best use of that, I think it should be on all of our minds.
And I'll just say, the first-come, first-served really creates a bias for the already established organized organizations. And that's another challenge that we have to kind of work through for the ones who are smaller, who are coming through this process, who don't have those kind of pockets to bridge some of that.
Yeah, and I think that my understanding of the reason why the Housing Action Subcommittee was created was to make sure that we're getting this information from all of these different communities, so that when they review these projects, they can say, okay, what's, what fits the letter of the law? What does our community really need? And to make sure that it's going through that process unlike it would if it were merely just, you know, sort of administrative, sort of revenue replacement.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Couple notes on this. In my version of the public rule, the only offset came was for 100% permanently affordable housing, which would address the population of 60% AMI or less. And when you're looking at 1590, whether we buy the lumber, pay for a permanent fee, or pay for the GFC, it's all going towards the same, you know, project. And so I don't think it's so crazy to use 1590 for that reason, especially when we removed the MFTE, and so it wasn't going to workforce housing specifically, it was going to this. I thought it made a lot of sense in there, but totally open to that discussion. The other thing was that in our GFC review committee, we had a number of community representatives as well. So it wasn't just developers, it wasn't just elects. We had a number of community representatives in there as well. And so it wasn't as if we didn't ask for the community's response. We had representatives from the Low Income Housing Consortium and some others that were there advocating on behalf of the community, so.
I would caution you on thinking that you meet an equity lens merely in virtue of the fact that, thinking that some population, just, you know, add a nuance. I know you're shaking your head.
That's definitely not what I'm saying. That's definitely not what I'm saying.
Yeah, but I just want to make sure that's part of, like, what is being, you know, pointed to, in my opinion, by what Councilwoman Wilkerson is saying. I could be wrong. So I just want to make sure that nuance is still there.
So before we go further, Matt Boston, could you please come up for a minute? And go ahead, ask your question.
Just a last, final comment. I just, just to, Councilmember Bingles, you know, kudos to him because he did get outright support from both the Spokane Alliance and the Spokane Low Income Housing Consortium. And so I think that that says quite a bit about what you've put forward, so.
So Council, did it again. Matt Boston, do you want to talk about the impact on the budget, please?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to talk really quick, as you're talking about an ordinance that's passing for GFCs as, in its entirety, and you're talking about a offset, offset for the GFCs. I think it's important to at least be cognizant of having a funding source in the budget, right? When you're discussing this idea of saying, we will identify a funding source at a later date, it makes it very, very difficult, knowing the budget constraints that we're in leading into 2024. So if you're talking about pushing this off to December and passing this budget on January, or on November 27th, the challenge becomes exponentially higher as of December 4th or further past that date. I know that in talking to Spencer, Steve, and a handful of others, the, there was never really pushback on the ideas and the parameters of how those funds would be issued out. It was merely having a funding source available to identify and be available for the people that are going to be applying for these funds. In all actuality, I would say that you're probably not going to be really issuing these funds until 2025, because you had a heavy onset, you have the waterfall, and I'm gonna refer to Spencer to kind of talk about this, because I was just talking to him as early as this afternoon about this, of different funding opportunities that are out there, whether it be the CHIP grant, whether it be a combination of 1406 and 1590. I think it absolutely does need to be talked to at the Housing Action Subcommittee and have their insight on things, but I think just to, as Nicolette provided that insight earlier, that they may not be fully aware of all of the other constraints that are following with the other funding opportunities that are out there. So to bring everything together, I think having that discussion of what are the funding sources and making sure that we're doing that with an equity lens, making sure that we're not just providing incentives to the same players that we're providing incentives for year in and year out is hugely important. I think Spencer would probably, I think it would probably benefit all of you to talk to Spencer and/or Steve, if not right now, in the very near future, and then just caution you of pushing this off to December, when you've already passed the budget. Because right now, in the budget, as you all know, there is $7-plus million that is programmed within $1590. There is eight, nearly a million dollars programmed within $1406. We heard from the administration that there, those programs are very loosely written, and that in 1590, there is roughly $3 million in incentives. Now is your opportunity to kind of say, okay, well, what do we want those incentives to look like? Do we want that full $3 million to be programmed? Do we want it to go to this program? Or do we want a portion of it to go to this program? So if you can push it to align with the budget, I think it's going to be hugely helpful for the success of not only the GFC offset program, but also the budget constraints that we'll have in 2024.
Thank you. Go ahead.
And Spencer, I think you had a presentation or something on this. Were you gonna share that with us?
I thought you'd never ask. Yeah, this is just a couple of slides to run through, to provide some additional context. So the first thing is, the public rule that we're talking about does not actually commit a specific funding source. So the public rule is really about the decision-making process for how those offsets would be given or granted to applicants who are coming forward with a proposal that meets the affordable housing definitions in the rule. But where that funding comes from is not addressed directly in the public rule. Back to Matt Boston's earlier statements, it's really more of a budget discussion. And that's why I think it makes sense to bring it forward alongside the budget. So, quick context, offsetting versus waiving. We've been consciously using the term offsetting because state law does not, because of the changes, does not allow us to just waive them outright. We have to find somewhere to pay, to backfill those fees, and so we're calling that offsetting, just to keep in everybody's mind that we can't just, the money doesn't just vaporize, it needs to come from somewhere. There's been a number of funding sources that have been discussed, so I'm gonna run through some of those sources, and then we can talk about how we can see, how we see a path forward for using those. The first that has come up is connecting housing to infrastructure grants. That's a state grant program. It's, this is really the perfect use for that grant money, because it is designed to pay for infrastructure costs for development that's providing low-income housing. So we have already been working on applications with a few, a few low-income housing providers. Three CHIP applications so far, $2.6 million in assistance. I'm not sure what breakdown of that would have been GFCs versus other infrastructure, but we have been working on those, and we will continue to prioritize those. This is not a long-term solution, but it is a great short-term solution. The reason it's not a long-term solution is that it's really dependent on the state allocating money for this program. And so we're up to the whims of the state and whether they have money that they can allocate or not. CDBG money has come up as well, so I wanted to address that. All current CDBG funding is fully subscribed, so in the current budget, there is no room, based on my discussions with CHHS, there's no room to carve out funding for something like this out of the CDBG money. There's an additional wrinkle, and that is that we have not identified infrastructure needs as a part of our consolidated plan, which is how decisions are made about funding through CDBG. So in order to fund infrastructure such as GFCs with CDBG money, we would need to add it to our consolidated plan. I think there's a lot of support on that from the staff side. There may be support on the council side, but it would be a part of a process to update that consolidated plan before money could be used for that purpose.
So what would we stop using the money for now? Because I know there's a lot of things we use CDBG for, like sidewalks and various things like that.
Meaning, if we were to wave a wand and reallocate for GFCs, what would fall off of the CDBG? I don't, I guess I don't really know the answer to that. We could have CHHS maybe comment on that. I'm not sure. Yeah, I guess I'm not as involved in the details in the program, so I don't have a good answer for that.
If whoever has that could get that to us, that'd be helpful for me.
Yeah, I think we could, we could provide that information.
Would it be neighborhood projects that would be? Right, okay. Can you come up?
So, just to be clear, this, someone made a motion to suspend, or to defer till the 4th, but we're actually going to be revisiting GFCs, a new version between Councilmember Bingle and I, next week. So I think all we need to do is suspend the rules and add this for next week. We don't need to go to December 4th, because that does not match up with what we're doing next week. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I would say it seems like the two are tied together.
Yes.
So we should defer both, or?
Well, we already agreed we were gonna work on a solution between the two of us for next week.
So we do the same for this?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it seems like they should be done at the same time.
So.
So my question then for Libby then would be, could they look at the public rules to make sure it is not in conflict with the SMC on the 1590, if that stays in the narrative? If that can be done the next week, I could look at that, but.
Okay. Did you have more?
I can run through a couple of other slides, if you want. I guess I'll leave it up to you.
We're getting kind of close on time, so go ahead.
Okay, I'll just quickly run through. Home funds is another one that's come up. Basically, home funds cannot be separated out to pay for just small pieces of projects, so we couldn't really set up a fund to pay GFCs out of home funds. That said, if a project is coming forward to use home funds, those GFC costs can be included as a project cost. So home funds can pay for GFCs, just not as a separate little line item where we, you know, dole it out to certain projects. It would just be part of an overall project cost. There was some discussion about a utility rate bump, a one-time utility rate bump, and then that additional funding over time would be able to pay for these GFC costs. We think there's some legal issues there, and we can talk offline if you want to talk more about that. So we, I've used the term waterfall, and basically, this is sort of like, how do our, how do we align our, or what are the, what's the first place we go for funding? And then what's maybe the next one when that's not available? And what's the last resort? So CHIP is really the best option here, at least in the short term. To the extent there's a project that either doesn't qualify for CHIP, or CHIP money runs out or something, we would also point to the home program. If a project can qualify for the home program and can come forward for funding, there's gonna be another RFP probably in early 2024. And so there will be some more home funding available. And again, that, those GFCs can be added as a line in the home funding program. So that would be another area where that funding can be used. We see the 1590 and 1406 essentially as a last resort. If all of those other sources dry up and there's no, there's no additional funding available, and before we have a chance to change the CDBG consolidated plan, so that those funds are in play, then 1590 and 1406 could essentially work as a stopgap until we're able to bring CDBG into the picture. And there may be other funding sources as well that become available. So I think that's it. I don't want to take more time with the legislative opportunities thing.
Okay.
Just keep in mind that this public rule doesn't actually commit us to any specific funding sources. That's really more of a budget discussion.
Okay, thank you. So here's our, here's what we get to do. We can suspend the rules and add this if we want, as Councilmember Wilkerson said, she needs more information by next week. If you don't get it, then we can further defer it. So could I have a motion to suspend the rules?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, we need to add this version circulated by Libby. Could I have a motion? Go ahead.
I have a question on this. Is, are we adding the staff version or my version?
We're not talking about your versions at all.
We're talking about the version.
That's what I need a clarification on.
The Libby version that she circulated earlier.
In the same email, she circulated two versions. That's why I was asking.
No, the rules.
Yeah, the public rule, she circulated two versions in that.
She did.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there's a bingo version, and there's a staff version.
Libby, which one?
And what are the differences?
Yes.
Back up here again. I'll just quickly summarize. The public rule that staff produced, that council president is sponsoring, was our kind of initial proposal that we've presented several times, the 50%. Councilmember Bingle reached out, and we worked with him to prepare some changes to that. So the key changes are, it would fund affordable housing offsets at 100% of the GFC cost instead of 50%, recognizing that that has a bigger hit on whatever budget is identified. The desire was to take out some of the project types that we had written into our staff proposal, so that it was really only limited to low-income housing that's funded by state or federal programs. The original version included MFTE and the sales tax incentive, and it had, and it had, I'm trying to remember the other one. Anyway, it had some other affordable housing-related programs, but the desire was to really just single out the state and federally funded affordable housing as a way to limit the budget that would be needed in order to backfill those GFCs.
Go ahead.
Could you clarify, then, the state-funded? Are those then having to abide by the Evergreen standard?
I don't know the answer to that.
Because that would be adding probably a substantial amount of cost to those projects, which gives me a lot of heartburn, so.
Yeah, I mean, they're meeting them, if they're coming forward with state money or federal money, then they're, you know, this wouldn't change the requirements as far as what they're required to abide by.
There's one other distinction, and I can't remember if it also applies to permanently affordable, but there was a maximum on the GFC waiver that came in, which for water was $40,000, and for wastewater was $20,000.
Thank you, yes.
Did that also apply to permanently affordable housing?
So that was, that's the other substantial change, is that in Councilmember Bingle's version, we have removed that maximum. Again, this was out of concern for the budget impacts and needing to identify funding to backfill. We had put, we'd proposed a maximum limit to what your backfill could be. And under Councilmember Bingle's version, because he's stripped out some of those other housing or programs that would qualify, we would take out the maximum, and projects would qualify for as much as there's funding for, essentially.
So the question becomes, which version do you want to make a motion towards? The Bingle version or the Keneer version? So do I have a motion to put one of them, to suspend the rules? We've done that, and replace it with one of those? Go ahead.
Just for consistency's sake, I'll make the motion to add the Keneer version. I feel confident that, you know, the other version is something that we can discuss, but let's just do the staff version that's in there, and then we can have a full discussion on if we want the full staff program or mine.
Thank you. Any, no more discussion. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So just so I'm clear, apologize. You want the version that's already in the packet to stay, right?
Yes.
Okay.
The Keneer version.
You want the new version that Libby sent out today?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The Libby version, okay.
Anything else for the 20th? I have a motion, not related to the 20th.
We have not gone through the 20th. We haven't even briefed the, do you want to go ahead and make your motion?
Sure. Yeah, I'll make a motion that we cancel our city council standing committee and legislative meeting on December 18th, and move the consideration of the ordinance from that date to December 4th.
Does he have a second? Did you second that?
No. I'll second. I haven't seen it yet. Yeah, for discussion.
What's the ordinance on the 18th?
That's the one that we deferred till the, I think Council President, Councilmember Wilkerson deferred it to the 18th.
That's the budget ordinance for standing budget meetings on study sessions, second Thursday of the month.
So moving that up to December 4th and canceling the December 18 meeting.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I second, yeah.
Okay, discussion. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. All right, thank you. Now, Mr. Jones, could you please start with the consent agenda for the 20th?
All right, thank you, Council President. So number one and two, these items will be briefed by Major Eric Olson. What's that?
Which ones are those I've got?
We got a value blanket renewal, and then a purchase of the NL Curtis & Sons.
Can you raise your podium? There's a button on the right. There you go. Thank you.
All right, so we, first off, we're asking for the renewal of the value blanket with galls. That allows us to buy uniforms. They were the contract winner. This is the last year of that renewal out of five years. Any questions on that? And the other one, is that the purchase of gas masks?
Yes.
I have, okay. So this is what I talked about at the Public Safety Committee meeting last week. It's just authority and approval to buy the gas mask for all commissioned officers, rings of sergeant, and below.
Can I, I have to ask a really silly question.
Yep.
Why are they called Avon Gas Mask?
It's a brand name.
That's it, like Avon? No. Okay.
Avon call.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get you. All right, you'll be up too. You have others on consent. So number three, consultant agreement with Tool Design Group. This will be briefed by Colin Quinhurst.
Good afternoon. This is a contract with Tool Design Group to choose an alignment and concept design for the Pacific Avenue Neighborhood Greenway going east from Sherman over to Perry Street. So to connect from U District Gateway Bridge over to the Sprague Union Business District. That's for $179,000.
I've heard the answer, but could you tell us again, why is it going to take so long for this design study before we get to the next step? This has been kind of ongoing.
Yeah, yeah. It's a, we expect an 18-month timeline, so a year and a half to get to 30% concept designs. And the reason it takes that long is because there's kind of a critical juncture in the alignment under the Hamilton Street overpass. So you get to the end of Pacific Avenue, and there's a dead end, and then there's Sprague Way, north and south. So you either have to ramp down or bridge over that, and then get under the Hamilton Street overpass on Sprague somehow, or underneath Sprague on Erie Street. So there's a lot going on right there, and either to build a bridge is one design direction, which is a whole nother phase of design, or to ramp down to Sprague Way and repurpose that street is a whole different direction, which we've encountered a lot of bluebass salt, so really hard to dynamite through that, or a bunch of fill, which is just kind of trash, making up space in there. So we really don't know what we're going to find. So there are a lot of unknowns in how we're going to approach that intersection there.
Good, thanks. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Colin. Number four and five is an acceptance of grants, and this will be briefed by Major Eric Olson.
Yep, welcome. Thank you again for having back. This is for the 22 fiscal year JAGA grant. This one is going to give the city $96,850. And then there's the 23 fiscal year grant for, that will give the city $118,145. And do I want to cover the SBOs that go along with that?
Sure.
And then SBOs for both of those grants, to use the 22 grant, that will be used for the ballistic door panels that we discussed last week, and the 23 grant would be used to procure gas masks and hopefully a patrol vehicle if we can get them purchased. Any questions on any of that?
All right, perfect. Thank you, Major.
Don't go too far. We've got ledge items, too.
I think we covered, yeah, we covered the two SBOs with the two consent.
Okay.
So we're, we're being efficient here. So that'll be in the consent. And then moving on to the legislative agenda, we covered the two, first two special budget ordinances related to the JAG grants. The next SBO ordinance, C36464, is the Home Entitlement Program Fund. And then online, we have Richard Colton to brief this item.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Again, as presented last week, this is a special budget ordinance to program the Home ARP Fund, two projects that are currently being reviewed by the Affordable Housing Committee prior to going to the CHHS Board, and then ultimately to you. And this will allow us to fund those projects that are ultimately selected to be funded.
All right, not seeing any questions. Thank you, Richard. The next SBO is ordinance C36465. Chief Brian Schaefer could not be here, but what this is, is reimbursement from the Department of Natural Resources. Anytime we have a state MOB, we track as far as our apparatus, overtime, personnel, then that gets billed back. So this is a reimbursement for that.
And MOB is short for mobilization?
Yes, sir.
Just in case anybody's listening.
Any questions on that one? All right. Moving into resolutions and final reading ordinances, we have a resolution 2023-0096, and this will be briefed by Nate Solia.
Good afternoon. Nate Solia from ICM, here to talk about the Water and Sewer Rehabilitation Program again. Thank you. So a quick recap, property owners, property owners are responsible for the water and sewer systems, or for their own water and sewer systems. Any breaks or rehabilitation that needs to be done, these costs can be significant, ranging anywhere from $5,000 to $35,000 or more. Despite that, there's limited financial assistance available for, to help residents achieve that. So ICM has proposed this program. It's going to be a 10-year low-interest loan program to help residents pay for water and sewer rehabilitation. Loan repayment will be added to the monthly utility bill. Eligibility will be for property owners making 80% of the area median income or less that have a utility system in need of rehabilitation. We will evaluate the program after five years to see how it's doing. Timeline, asking y'all to approve the policy and resolution this month. The RFQU is currently out for proposal. Plan to do contract award in early 2024, start the program in spring of 2024. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Nate.
Before we go on, and before 5 o'clock rolls around where people sign up for open forum, because we have a long meeting tonight, I'm asking for a motion to suspend the rules for purposes of moving open forum to the end of the 6:00 PM legislative session this evening.
Summit.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So now moving.
Point of origin, we actually, we didn't make the motion to move, we just suspended the rules.
No, we made the motion to move open forum to the end.
So do we not need to suspend the rules? Because I think we only took one vote.
No, I don't think we do.
Do you need a rule suspension, Chris?
I just correct.
We do need to suspend the rules.
You moved to suspend the rules for lack of a particular purpose, now you need to actually do it.
So I'll move that we move open forum to our last item on our agenda tonight.
Thank you. All right, let's try this again. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, good. Thank you.
All right. So the resolution 2023-0097 has been moved to special considerations, number two. Then we have resolution 2023-0098. This will be briefed by Christine Schisler.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. This is in regards to the SMC that requires.
Christine, you can put, there's a button there, just lower it. There you go. And then pull the microphone down a little bit. There you go.
A resolution that's required by the SMC, oh four, 14070, that council approves the increase in the contribution rate for SIRS. So we're asking from 10.25% to 11% for 2024. Is there any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. The next two ordinances have been moved to the hearings, number one and two, and then ordinance C32457 is amended. This will be briefed by Eldon Brown.
Good afternoon. This is the ordinance for releasing the easement in Sixth Avenue so we can actually do a new first and final reading to do that. And we just have a property owner that wants to build on that. I'd be happy to show you that sketch again if you want to see it. But originally, when we approved the vacation back in 2000 Comcast, it was AT&amp;T at the time reserved an easement through this right away. And since that time, the property owners reached out to Comcast, and they've agreed to release that easement as long as the council agrees to release it and amend the original ordinance. So that's what we're trying to do, do a new first and final reading to release that original easement that was reserved as part of the 2000 vacation. Any questions?
No.
Thanks.
Thank you, Eldon. Ordinance C36461 was moved to special considerations, number one, and then under special considerations, both those items were previously discussed. And then moving into the first two hearings, hearing number one and number two, those will be briefed by Tim Thompson.
Thank you, councilmembers. Good afternoon. These two items are related to the permanent building opportunity for housing ordinances that we've been here several times before you. So here to answer any questions and any comments that we've received, we continue to forward on to you as well, just for your review. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thanks for all your work on this. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then hearing number three is just the hearing on the proposed 2024 budget. And with that, that includes the November 20th.
Right. And we are finished. Thank you all. See you back here.
Wait, wait. Can we get a motion to approve the advance agenda?
Oh, sorry.
So moved.
Motion. Thank you. Second, anyway?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Jerry. All right, we'll see you back here at 6 o'clock for our ledge session. Thank you.